Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. For those of you that have never been here, let me explain how we operate. This is the October meeting for the Lount County Valdosta Loaning Board Appeals. I will call each case by case number and case name. Someone from staff will come to the lectern, give us the request, and the meet of the data that we need to fill in. Once they have completed the presentation, there will probably be questions or discussions among the board members and back and forth to staff to make sure we understand it. Once we are confident with that, I will ask if there is anyone here, applicant or somebody representing the applicant perhaps, that would like to come to the lectern, give us any additional information you would like for us to take under advisement. If you choose to come to the lectern, please give us your name and address for the record so we'll have it in the minutes. Once you have given us the information that you feel like is pertinent, there will probably be discussions or questions. Once we're satisfied, we have heard that part of it, then if there are multiple people that wish to speak in behalf of it, we ask that if it's something that has not been brought to our attention, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address, give us the information. If the information you have has already been presented, please don't string us out by giving us the same thing again. Once we're satisfied, we have heard the request in the pro side, then I will ask if there are any persons here in opposition or if there are any persons here that have questions about what is being requested. Again, if there are concerns or opposition, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, give us the information you'd like for us to take under advisement. Once we have heard from both sides, we will generally render a decision date. However, it is within the bylaws. If we feel like parties need to talk or information may be lacking, we can postpone acting on it until the next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be in November. I forgot to turn this thing on. I am sorry.
Was it said the chairman should turn his microphone on?
Yes, something like that. But that's all right. She knows what I say every now and then. Okay, first case we're gonna call is Lount County Case, VAR 2015-13 Williams Grundle, 6553 Lake Industrial Boulevard, Lake Park, Georgia. It is your show, Carmella.
Hello, everyone. Hope everyone is enjoying this fall weather. Our first case before you is a county case. It's a case by Electrical Test Labs in Georgia. They're proposing an addition to their existing facility subject property located in the Lake Park industrial area. I'm not sure what's going on with the slide there. But as you can see, surrounded by industrial zone property and the applicants proposing an addition to their existing facility. The addition is gonna be to the rear of the building and as you can see from your staff reports, the addition encroaches upon the side yard as well as the rear yard setback. Just to note, the rear yard setback, they are encroaching 10 feet and they, instead of coming before you all for variance, they're gonna go the added waiver route where the staff can grant an administrative waiver as long as it's in the board in 20%. But for the sake of this board, they're requesting a variance to that secondary side yard setback, which is around that cul-de-sac area. The requirement has changed quite a bit from the original construction of the building. The building was constructed in 2004. The setbacks have changed from that time and there's about a 20-foot difference. But the requirement is 56 feet from the property line and the addition is proposed to be about 20 feet from the property line. So they're asking for a 36-foot variance. Staff looked at this request and just looked at the existing uses around this subject property, the home depot, and didn't feel that the encroachment would be a detriment to adjacent property and recommended approval citing criteria D.
Anyone have questions or anything to discuss at this time?
Two questions. There's no problem with the new building and that drainage management. I noticed there was a drainage management. That won't have any effect on that.
No, as a matter of fact, we did measure because there's quite a bit of drop and there's about 50-foot difference between where the existing building is and where the drop. We're guessing that with the addition, there's probably gonna be about 10-foot distance before you get that drop, this new addition.
Okay, my second question. If they were building this addition based on the previous requirements before there was a change, would they follow within the allotted...
There would be some encroachment. However, that encroachment, we would have been able to handle with an administrative waiver.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Carmella. Is there anyone here that would like to give us any information or represent?
My name is Stan Grant. I'm with the Valdosta Lount County Development Authority. I'm here on behalf of William and Lynn Grundle. They had a conference today, so... Just on behalf of the development authority, this is in our industrial park, Lake Park, and we just ask that you approve this because it's going to benefit the future expansion of this company. Stuart Erby actually just bought out Electrical Test Labs and they're a big distributor of electrical and utility supplies. So this will help with their future expansion.
We have a letter. We'll make a part of it.
And that's all that. Thank you.
Any questions? Hang on. Any questions for him? Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion or questions or anything we need to talk about before I call the question? Can I get a motion on this request?
I motion to approve the variance citing criteria D.
I have motion on table for Mr. McCall to grant the request as presented, citing criteria D. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Hoppe. All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, good luck with it. Hope everything works out.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case we will call is the City of Valdosta's case, Application 2015-06 to Caleb, Georgia Court, Taco Bell, 1199 North St. Augustine Road. We have a new moderator, a new emcee.
Yes, sir.
It is your show, Tracy.
Thank you, Chairman. We have a various request from Mr. Mike Gray on behalf of Taco Bell on the corner of St. Augustine and Gordo. The property is highly commercial and is about three-quarters of a major launch. There is a current Taco Bell restaurant with drive-through existing. They intend to demolish the existing Taco Bell and rebuild with a new Taco Bell. Since they are demolishing and rebuilding, then all bets are off. Figuratively speaking, they have to comply with current codes. After reviewing site plans, building facades, we found some minor variances that need to be considered for the plans to be approved. Subject property, existing Taco Bell. Adjacent property, commercial area, you've got a strip mall, you've got some restaurants, you've got gas stations. Three variances involved. First result revolves around drive-through stacking spaces. There is a requirement for a single lane or more, like you see at most Taco Bells, a lot of fast food restaurants, of six spaces from the place where you place your order back. In other words, so as not to impede traffic, not to impede the circulation flow of people back and out. Maybe you don't want to go through the drive-through, you want to get around the drive-through. Anyway, six stacking spaces from the place where you place your order back. This is a little bit different in the sense that they have aid from the place where you pick up your order back, not from the order board back, if that makes sense. They do recommend change of ordinance and staff recommends approval on that variance. The second variance that they are asking for relates to the number of parking spaces. As a fast food restaurant with a drive-through lane, they're required to have 14 spaces for 1,000 square feet of restful area. The building is about 2,330 square feet, which would require a minimum of 33 parking spaces. They are proposing 29, which is for sure. Staff understands that it is a corner lot. We also understand that there are setbacks and limited building area on this particular parcel. So we will recommend approval for that particular variance. The last variance relates to the facade. This property is within the Bay Tree University Commercial Corridor, which is one of three overlays in the city. The Bay Tree overlay, the Fermenters overlay, and the Urban Commercial Corridor overlay, which covers most of the majorities of the city. St. Augustine, Bay Tree, Norman, Ashley Patterson, North Oak Tree, that kind of help improve the maneuverability and appearances of our city. One of those requirements in the Bay Tree overlay is a pronounced or covered entry. In other words, a cover of some sort to shelter the patrons as they walk in from outside, you know, from rain, sunlight, things of that nature. Staff wants... The goal of these overlays is to also steer away from corporate architecture, something a little bit unique, something that says no law. After review of this particular variance, we couldn't find any hardship. So this is the only section, segment that we recommend denial. So drive-through stacking spaces, that variance, the variance for the number of parking spaces, we recommend approval. The pronounced entry or the covered entry, staff recommends denial. Any questions? Ms. Hoppe.
Is there a reason why we couldn't have covered entry?
I will let the applicant answer that. There have been several of us involved in review. I have not heard firsthand why Taco Bell is not provided, is not linked by a cover entry.
Does covered entry also include something like an awning?
Yes, ma'am.
And is this just covered entry or covers...
Just the entries and exits, doorways.
Can you enlighten the board to what, if any, requirements or regulations as to size or type, or is it just some kind of cover?
Some kind of cover.
There's nothing in it that says it must be so many feet or so high or so low or any kind of construction?
No.
Does the Taco Bell on Ashley have this?
Yes, ma'am. The one that was recently built in the past two years. Yes, ma'am. Dr. Howes.
We deny this variance and keep progress of the plans to complete to further.
From SaaS, from SaaS or do you know?
No.
But again, that's from SaaS.
Well, if that makes any question, you want to ask again when we have somebody to talk with. Any other questions, any other discussions? Thank you very much, Tracy. Is there anyone here from Taco Bell or representing Taco Bell that would like to give us some enlightenment?
Hey, this is Mike Perry, Birmingham, Alabama, Taco Bell. If we'll walk backwards, I guess, number three first, since that's where the question is. When the new Taco Bell design came out, what happened is they kind of took away our ability with the pronounced canopies because of the way that it... There's a slat system. It's a aluminum slat system that goes on the outside. What happened is we used to have a canopy that was eight foot three inches deep hanging out from the building. What happened when we went to this new architecture, those canopies started sagging because of the support system wasn't in place to be able to keep that from moving out. So we went back to a smaller canopy. Since we've been talking and through Tracy and the rest of the staff, I think there's a way that we can make it happen and it takes a little bit of re-engineering and hiding some cables back up behind the slats to make it happen. But hey, if I get two out of three variances, I'll figure out a way to get the third. So, you know, it's really, it's what we're trying to do to... One, we kind of have our hands tied a little bit through corporate, what their architectural standards are. So it takes us a little bit of unique, you know, application to that process. And we've had good success with our shorter awnings, but again, we can figure out a way to get the larger awnings. And your question about drive-through and those kind of things, those aren't really affected. It's still got the pronounced awnings or that. Our business is making customers happy, so that's what we're trying to do with the awnings over the drive-through.
I believe our question was answered. There are options out there that this variance is denied by this board, so I have any questions.
Any other questions, any other discussions from the board at this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here would like to speak on behalf of Taco Bell? Is there anyone here in opposition to what is being requested or is there anyone here that has questions about what is being requested? Okay, I think we've heard it. Any other questions, any other discussions before I call a question? Can I get a motion?
Let me ask you a question about how we're going to proceed. Do we lock them all together or go one by one individual?
Well, it's up to the board's prerogative. I really don't see a problem with locking all three together. How you want to do it, if you feel more comfortable doing it one at a time, we're doing one at a time.
We're gonna follow staff's recommendation for two.
Yeah, if that should be what is requested, then the motion would be something to the tune of, I make a motion that we grant the variance for item one, per staff recommendation, grant the variance item two, per staff recommendation, deny request three, per staff recommendation, citing whatever. Any problems with doing all three or you want to break them up? Can I get a motion on the request?
Make a motion that we do just what you said.
Okay, I have motion for this quarter month to recommend item one, the stacking spaces as presented from staff. Approval of variance number two, the reduction in parking spaces citing... Presentation by staff, I'm sorry, not citing. Denial of variance three, which would be the canopy for entrance and exit, citing...
Staff's report.
Okay, for staff's report. All right, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Do I have a second on the board? All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you very much. Tracy, I didn't put your name in there. I'm sorry. A second.
Okay, Mr. Howes with the second.
I didn't say it. I'm sorry. Okay, the next case we will call is Application 2015-07, Stowey-Ace Properties LLC, 4387 Inner Perimeter Road. You have a show again.
Thank you. This particular variance request is from Stowey-Ace Properties, particularly for a property on the inner perimeter, 4387 inner perimeter where Ace Electric, the electrical contractors are. It is highly commercial and consists of electrical contractors on a piece of property that's a little bit over five acres, roughly five and a quarter. The applicant is anticipating building about 15,000 square foot warehousing type building in the rear of their property. The reason this is in front of you is to follow. The applicant is proposing a metal building, storage warehousing. We have two regulations that prohibit metal siding on facades at the base of the front yard. First is in the LVR, in the zoning portion, it requires everything that is commercially owned, whether it's neighborhood commercial, whether it's community commercial, whether it's highly commercial, to be faceted if it's a metal building with bricks, stucco, glass, things of that nature. Basically to prevent an industrial type look in our commercial corridors. Now, if this property was in a manufacturing area, we wouldn't be here. But again, we're here because it's in a commercial area. Second being, they are also in the inner perimeter corridor overlay. Similar to the case that we heard before, this one's in the inner perimeter overlay, which requires some faceting, brickstone, and given help improve some, improve the aesthetics of our commercial corridors. After reviewing the case, we realize that the property is long. We realize that there's some landscaping towards the front of the property. Evergreens, trees, shrubs, things of that nature. We also realize that the warehouse that showed is sitting about 400 feet from the property line, which is a good distance away. Being that it's sitting a good distance away, about 400 feet, and given that it is sitting towards the back of the property and is, will be faceted somewhat by the existing riddery up front, landscaping, it does meet the intent of the ordinance, which is to not have a warehousey, manufacturing type look down our commercial corridors. So given that, we're recommending approval of this particular variance request with two conditions. Number one, that it's based on the building sizes and locations as shown in your site plans. The second one, approval with the existing evergreen trees and landscaping across the front of the property, that that's maintained for a distance of at least 125 feet from the property. Any questions?
While there are two or three trees marked at the over, orange...
That I didn't notice when I did my factor.
Any other questions, any discussions at this time? Anyone here supportive of this application?
Yes, sir.
Is anything you would like to give information about?
Yes, sir. First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for serving on this board. It's a lot of effort, trouble, but it does help the community. My name is Glenn Gregory. I'm at 3226 Stowey Road. I'm an architect here and I'm representing Ace Electric. I didn't quite understand all of Tracy's two stipulations. Can you reiterate that for me?
Tracy, do you want to do it? You want me to try to tell them?
Either way, whatever makes you want to.
Why don't you do it?
The first.
Help to pass these around. These are pictures of the existing facility. Well, tell them again, Tracy.
Staff recommends that if Zoning Board Appeals is going to approve this variance, that the building be located about in the general area where it's at on your submitted site plan. And then number two, that the existing riddery and trees, evergreens, shrubs at the front not be disturbed by 100 feet of feedback from the front door.
Okay, did that answer that?
Yes, sir, it did. And there won't be any problem complying with that. The only trees we're disturbing is the ones we have to cut to get the building in there.
When I went out there today, there were some trees up front that were tagged. It's an orange tag, with a tape. Do you know why they're...
Well, it's been a landscape inventory down out there and up front, trees tagged with yellow tape, is it orange tape?
It's orange.
Bobby?
Because if they're requiring...
Is it white label tag? Tom?
I do. They're tagged because the power company is wanting to move the power line a little bit and there's two trees. One of them is a partially dead tree and the other one leans out over the east and they were wanting to take those two trees out.
So they're gonna move the lines closer to, towards your building?
Yes. That's one of them.
Well, I mean, with their contingency on approval and seeing marked trees, that generally any tape you fix them to...
It's not as good.
And of course, they're recommending approval, so... If you look at those pictures, it's pretty easy to make the case that we have an existing building, built in 1997. It has metal siding within 100 feet of perimeter. This building's going back over 350. And so just from an architectural theme or motif alone, it behooves us to use metal siding similar to metal siding on the existing building. And of course, we have some architectural shape to it. This existing building has an opposing shed roof design and we too have an opposing shed roof design, so it's not just a, you know, a square-eaten metal building. And there's been thought given to the color, how it would be compatible with the existing building. And if you look at these photographs, you can see there's a lot of vegetation, a lot of trees, existing trees, mature trees that will remain in place. And you won't even notice this building. You just, just won't notice. I mean, it's on the back of a block. And we feel like it's just... Now, what will happen is there will be some masonry used on the front of this building on the office part. So we mix the metal siding on the warehouse part with the split-faced block on the office part. And they, they come together and maximize...
I'll be at the relation.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, I see you.
I was fixing to ask that question because based on what we have in the package.
Yeah.
Based on where the building is, the majority of the building is actually behind, is going to be behind the existing building, so we're really not gonna see it.
That's right.
But the part that sticks out and potentially may be visible from the street, at least in here, is drawn, that you're gonna have some kind of facade on that part.
Yeah, this facade right here, of course, is front of the office.
Right.
And everybody's got it in their package. In the dark, colored in the area is the metal siding similar to the existing building. It's just, it's not, it's a situation that probably the law just... Probably the law just couldn't cover. You know, it's one of those areas that you, you don't try to cover it with the law and the best thing for us to do is come and ask for a variance.
And that keeps our jobs secure.
That's right.
Okay, any other questions, any discussions for Mr. Gregory? Thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anything else that you would like to add, Bobby?
You told it.
Is there anyone here in opposition to this? Does anyone have a concern or questions about what's being requested? Any other discussions before we call a question on this issue? Can I get a motion on this request?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to grant it approval subject to the two conditions recommended by staff, citing staff's report.
We have motion from Dr. Howes to accept the variance as presented, according to staff, with the recommendations for the site plan to be made a part of the minutes and that would be approximately where the building is and that the existing trees would not be disturbed, shrubs and whatnot would not be disturbed. Yes, Mr. Mark?
This is making perfect clearance in the written record, but that's for the existing building and the new building.
Okay.
To amend what's been said by staff.
Commended for both buildings. I have motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Unanimous, good luck with it. Tom, y'all make it look good. Hope it worked out like you need it.
Thank y'all for your head.
Thank you. Okay, now, we are done with the meet of the business. We have approval of the minutes. I read them. Did you see anything? Did I miss something?
Yes.
Did I miss something?
I was...
Would you please? I did not pay attention to who was here to do this.
I did.
I did not pay attention to who she was doing with, oh, that was it? I think it was split first, man. Okay, can I get a motion to accept the minutes with the correction?
I make motion that we accept those minutes with the last.
I have motion from Ms. Tyler, do I have a second? Second to Nancy. All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, before we get to the Jorners one, item five eight, would there be any blueprint on the laminated badges or IDs or anything, or is that still in the wishing stage?
It's, I, I'll speak for myself, not for you. Um, talked to Chief Childress and Investigator Shirley from the Police Department. I have an ID for when I go out and play, you know, and when I go out and do enforcement. And I was hoping that he would at least be able to get the city appointees something similar. Unfortunately, the PD is only allowed to do those for reports. And since you're appointees rather than employees, they're unable to do that. Now, Matt has been, was going to talk to both Chief Childress and Mr. Hickson, but was unable to during yesterday's staff meeting. So that's on match right on, to talk, to both of them on like that.
So it is, it is still pending?
Right.
Still pending, we're trying to come up with an alternative. And to offer some ideas, I don't know where the county is to make that way or not.
Um, the county is just, is, is still pending, but they just encourage you all just to stay on the right way and not, you know, go on private property. Uh, but we're, we're still reviewing it all kinds.
Come on. How can we give these cases and say on the right way? You've got, I always go, if there's somebody there, introduce myself and tell them who I am. But you've got to come on the right way, more times than not, in order to get a view of everything.
You can't just do a drive-by, sometimes I've...
I understand, but, you know, just for me, with me being staff for Blount County and zoning administrator, technically and legally, I'm not allowed to go on private property. I do it, um, but technically, even our animal control officers, I mean, the law is very, um, explicit when it comes to going on private property.
Even when they have come to us to request a variance?
Well, everybody is always...
I think it's a really good idea, I think we should push forward.
I think that we should be clear when they apply, that it says, people will come on your property if they agree, people are going to come on your property, so look.
And speaking for city only, um, we have meetings with applicants ahead of time, and we sometimes discuss this, but probably more often do not, it just doesn't come up. I don't think there's any issue with getting the applicants made aware that some folks, uh, the decision makers, may be visiting their property, and so, you know, please do not impede them. But I think some of the concern also came from neighbors, wondering what the heck was going on and why people were around. That, we don't have a whole lot of control, of course, we don't communicate with the neighbors. But at least we can communicate with the applicants and let them be aware of the approximate timeframe when some people with friendly faces and so on will be around. Um, I mean, at the minimum, we can create, um, like an authorization letter, just identifying who you are, put it on city letterhead, and for more information, you know, call this phone number. We can do that, um, you know, it's not the best solution, but it's at least a solution, and rare.
It was, it was just a question to see if it was, it was still being worked on, or whether it is not.
Well, there's been some discussion.
Well, I, I do have a question. Is that something that, that has to go through, um, Chief and Detective Shirley? Is that something that we can honestly do within our own right? Is that something that we can do collectively, as far as an identification card or something?
That's one thing we're looking into, one of the logistics and what permissions are needed for us as our own department to create some type of identification that is not official technically, but might look official enough, you know, to get you by. Uh, what I would like to do is we start, you know, talking with the applicants. When we revise our application forms in January each year, we're going to add some language to it. When they, when they sign the form, they are acknowledging that board members may be visiting the premises. So at least they can't, you know, say something to you afterwards. But, oh, have you all been approached by the property owners or neighbors? Or I get the impression it's been a little bit of a...
It's very often, when you're out there observing, you've got people at a home all day long, and they look. And they see a strange car, as long as the car is private, they're going to look. If it's a city property car, whatever, they don't get that much attention. Most of the, our private car, automobiles, we need some protection out there. Because I don't want to run into a property where the police have been called on me because I might be doing the city's thing.
Well, I've noticed with city vehicles, at least my own observations, they actually look more. And so, I wonder why you're there. This afternoon, I went and looked at probably eighty-nine different sites, and I had people coming out in the driveway going, "Oh, this." And so, I just slowly got to eye.
Lose their respect, lose their respect.
Well, what, what was the situation, um, Isaiah, Isaiah Thomas? And I was out there, and I even identified who I was, you know? And I don't know for some odd reason, they, I was taking pictures of the property, they were taking pictures of me. And then the guy called from, I think, he had a nine-one-two number, and he was like, "Yeah, I want to know who, who was on my property." And, 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 because, you know, people might try to steal, take pictures, steal my supplies at night. And I was like, "No." And he, because of the vehicle I was in, he was like, "Yeah, you a confident what?" And I was like, well, yeah, I was there for, you know, a part of, you know, the zoning board, and I was in that property. He said, "Oh, okay, no, no problem, just, you know, they told me a guy was, they're taking pictures." And I was like, "What, I told him who I was," you know? But it's like, still, um, but in saying that, though, I did have another suggestion. We've all think about this, is we don't have, have to necessarily have a, have a badge? Or we can have a name tag, you know, name tag, write my name and zoning board, you know? That, I don't even think we can...
With no one's without a photo ID, but just a name.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think that's, that looks more presentable than not having anything at all. And, um, I, and I don't think we're going to have to go through, uh, the chief or anything for that.
Well, I, I didn't envision this as being a enforcement, like, you know, with my badge kind of thing, but more of, of a neck strap that had a little piece of laminated, whether it had my picture or not, but had my name, and that I was zoning board appeals, just something to look a little less, you know, like I'm tasing the joint. I mean, it's, it's been a long time since I was questioned, but there haven't been, one case in particular, it was a long time ago, the request was behind the house. And I started down, I pulled up, parked in the driveway, got out, started, I had a carport right there. The guy comes out, and I'm sure the carport was full of stuff, I mean, I looked in there, all kinds of stuff. "Who are you, what are you doing, you think you stole something?" And I just smiled, said, "Good afternoon, sir, I'm Dallas Richmond, zoning board appeals. You have a case coming up next week, and I'm here if you don't mind to look at it." "Oh, yeah," and I said, "Come right on." But like I say, until you get that first foot in the door, or something, they're looking at you cross-eyed and sideways.
And honestly, this may not work with neighbors, but if I'm out and I'm on private property, residential property versus, you know, a homeowner's party or something, well, I'll, I'll go up to the door, knock, introduce myself at the homeowner's home. And generally speaking, they're not, you know, they're not looking out their windows with a gun, you know, they're shooting their back doors or something.
I would never go on property without going up to the door and telling them who I am. And I almost take my nuts. And when they see that I've got something with their name on it and their case, that right there tells them who I am and what I'm doing there. And I think, that's your card, it may not be your entrance as far as the neighbors are concerned, but this tells that homeowner who you are, because you wouldn't have this paper if you weren't who you said you are.
I, I do agree that, um, but my, I did think about that. The only difference is, is everybody should be able to view the documents that you have, because it's like, when it's a, a bunch of people out there, like a lot of employers and workers, I don't want to go around showing, hey, you know, this is, you know, I just like, you know, I, I usually put some personal contact, but, um, other than that, if, if not that, I just, I would rather have, like I say, like something, like a little name tag around your neck, or maybe like a little name tag on your shirt, just something that, that you don't really necessarily have to show without trying to show, it just, it's, it's there.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing that I had, sort of a question in the back of my mind, we're fixing to be, next meeting in November, and every year we get to the December meeting, and everybody says, "Oh, by the way, we're going to do something." Do y'all want to think about it between now and November, look your schedule and see if you want to try to do something? Instead of waiting until the first week of December?
Let's ask Nancy, now, have we heard of your house, Nancy?
Well, think about it, we'll talk about it in November and see, you know, if, if there's enough interest, we'll try to do it, if there's not, we'll just be sure everybody's back to us.
We'll make it an agenda for the November meeting. We know you had at least one case.
Just, just another.
There's also, you dropped my memory too, next month will probably be a good idea to start thinking about election of chair by chair. We'd only do that in November, take nominations, and then vote on in December.
For real.
I thought we just did that. That was...
There was ten.
Scotty was in office.
Is mine an appointment at birth in December?
I don't think so.
I took that with Scott.
No. So Tracy, you are through, you are, uh, up till October eleventh of sixteen.
You've got one more year.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? We stand adjourned, thank you very much for your time and attention.